I'll now call the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for December the 6th. If you'll please join me in standing for a pledge of allegiance. Pastor Josh Frazier can't be here today. He's celebrating the birth of a new baby, so we'll have a moment of silence instead.
..................................................................................................................... Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing for amendments to multiple ordinances per session law 2021-138, which decriminalizes violations of certain ordinances. I'll turn it over to County Attorney Frank Queen.
Purpose of this public hearing is to hear public comment for the many changes that have been proposed in the general statutes as required by passage by the General Assembly of a general act that decriminalizes certain kinds of local ordinances, requires them to be enforced only by civil means, that is without filing criminal process, and make certain other conforming amendments to that statute. We've published previously and put up on our website the changes that are proposed to the ordinance. Most of them are fairly technical in that, for example, if an ordinance is allowed to have a criminal penalty for its violation, we have to cite the exact criminal statute that's involved, which generally is GS 14-4. That's a general misdemeanor violation. If the ordinance intends to have a stricter either criminal time, that is more than 30 days or more than 60 days incarceration, or more than a $50 fine, then the ordinance itself has to recite that. And we're allowed to do that. We have to recite it in the ordinance. So those are the general changes that have been made. Some of them are kind of interesting. I came across some pretty interesting provisions in our county ordinances that nobody asked me about, but if they, if anybody does, I've got some opinions about the validity of some of our provisions. Some of them were passed a long time ago, and they had good intentions, I'm sure, and they've kind of been overtaken by events or law. And so some of these ordinances, you gave me an occasion to have some suggestions probably for us next year about looking into our ordinances and making a kind of a comprehensive review. It's tedious as all get out to go into these things because every one of them has a subject matter that's very important to people locally, but there sometimes the ordinances were drawn up at a time and a place and a way that is kind of, time has kind of passed them by, and we need to kind of look at those. So that's for next year. For this right here, we just have these changes that have been proposed. Are there anyone who has a comment about the proposed changes in the ordinances? If not, then I'll close the public hearing on that subject. Any questions from the commissioners on any of these subjects? Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Chair of the Board of Commissioners.
I'd like to make a motion that Kevin Ansley remain the chair.
Second. I'd like to also make a motion with closed nominations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll just have it. All right. Mr. Chairman, congratulations. Turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity again. Appreciate that. Okay, I'll open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Commissioner Brandon Ansley as vice chair.
Second.
Excuse me, Brandon Rogers. I'll let you and Commissioner Ansley decide if that was an insult or a...
Jennifer seconded it, too.
And I seconded it, yeah.
Jennifer will talk.
Well, nobody gets the names right here.
It's been Monday for me since about 4:30 this morning, so.
Okay, so all in favor of Brandon Rogers as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. Did we do that okay? Tracy? Tracy's our clerk. We've got to make sure we do this right. Okay, so our next order of business is our public comment session. I do have three people that have signed up. Our timer's not working right now, so Amy will let you know when your time's up, and if you would, just finish your thoughts at that point, so we can move on to the next speaker. So our first, I'm just taking these in order I have, and the first person signed up to speak is Eric Overholz, and just want to let you know, you have, come on up, Eric, you've got three minutes for public comment, and there's some hand sanitizer if you'd like to use it, or wipes if you want to use it.
Okay.
Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Eric Overholz. I reside at 26 Davis Lane in Waynesville. And this morning, I'd like to express my thoughts regarding a speech that was brought before you at the last November 15th meeting. It was a young lady named Noelle Peterson that spoke, or Pedersen that spoke, and I was quite touched by what she had to say. Chairman Ansley, you're absolutely correct in talking about pathways and that it has helped many people in our community over the years, but, you know, people like Noelle. But I'd like for all of you to listen again to what she had to say. Pull it up on YouTube, November 15th, and you'll understand just why this is a success story. This is a Christ-centered program that asks attendees if they're willing to make changes to get themselves out of the predicament they're in. There has to be a commitment and a willingness to change, but there are also, there are rules that must be followed. There are curfews. There is a time to be back at the center for prayer and for support meetings. There are job tasks assigned throughout the facility, and participants work together. There are requirements that participants actively seek employment. All of these things are components of structure, structure. This is something that low-barrier shelters do not offer. Low-barrier shelters allow those things, those staying there, to continue on with their self-destructive behaviors. There is no curtailment of the continued drug abuse or alcohol abuse, no structure, no purpose, no direction, no pathway towards reintegrating back into society as a productive member. Noelle Pedersen understands this, and this is why she is warning you against supporting low-barrier shelters. You've all seen the fruits of what has happened in Asheville, where local politicians there have converted formerly nice hotels into housing for the homeless. Many, of course, are addicts, and predictably, these very places have become crime-infested hellholes, which only serve to exacerbate problems in the surrounding communities. It's time to face facts. Asheville is here. Take a look under some of the bridges in our county. The Russ Avenue Railroad Bridge, the Howe Mill Railroad Bridge near Raccoon Creek. Take a look at all of the trash, the syringes, the environmental hazards that's created there, the fires, four of them, four of them this past week in Waynesville alone, that can be attributed directly to the homeless vagrants. Do we want to allow, or worse yet, subsidized shelters that will only attract more of this? I think not. Today, I'm calling upon the board to actively start formulating plans for how to firmly deal with the homeless vagrancy population at the county level. We don't need any more task force studies, bureaucracy, or theories from social worker academics. We need strong, decisive leadership. That's why we elected you. In action. Okay, just one more statement. I don't know what this will look like. It may be the consideration of a county-wide ordinance prohibiting low-barrier shelters. There might be a decision simply to stop funding, but I ask you to take action now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Lisa Overholz.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Overholz, 26 Davis Lane, Waynesville. I would like to have a response from the Board of Commissioners as to why it is taking so long to make a decision on building a jail annex to handle our overcrowded and revolving door county jail. Your failure to take action has yielded negative results, and right now, what is happening in this county is appalling. All of you know that Haywood County, and especially the town of Waynesville, has gained a reputation amongst the homeless population as an easy touch because of the revolving door, lack of consequence judicial system fueled greatly by lack of jail space, and a proliferation of nonprofits and liberal churches that constantly give handouts without real accountability or any accountability. There have been reports of truckloads of homeless people being dropped off in frog level. God forbid you ever sanction or fund low-barrier sheltering to attract more of the same. Take a look at what has happened this past week. At least four fires in Waynesville alone. Three occurred under bridges where homeless encampments are located, and a building that burned down in Hazelwood was in an area frequented by homeless vagrants as well. Concerned citizens are getting sick and tired of seeing our beautiful county become marred not only by the crime, but also the growing amounts of discarded trash and syringes and abandoned shopping carts wantonly left around by vagrants without a care about our community whatsoever. I don't expect you to have all of the answers, but in areas where you can make a difference, the citizens would like to see you take some type of meaningful action, and making plans to fund and begin construction of a jail annex is one of these areas. Jails provide useful services. Aside from protecting the public, there are already operational programs which can be an early step in an inmate's recovery, such as NA and AA. Physical and mental help is available, as many of the homeless are unhealthy. as many of the homeless are unhealthy. If you care about the well-being of people on the fringes of society, please don't promote programs, or ideas, or low-barrier shelters, which are destructive to them and to the citizens of Haywood County. Mark Pless has found a facility in Raleigh that will take in twenty-five men, and it has a proven success rate. Please talk with him about his findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Sherri Morgan. Welcome, Sherri.
Hi, I'm Sherri Morgan. A nice young lady who had successfully gone through pathways spoke at the November fifteenth Commissioners' Meeting. She explained how following their required guidelines had helped her overcome homelessness. So why would anyone allow low-barrier or no-rule shelters? You didn't answer her question, Kevin Ansley, because you advocate for low-barrier shelters and harm reduction, which is on every socialist platform in the nation. If you read People's Action, the Party for Socialism and Liberation, the Democratic Socialist of America, and the Bread and Roses Caucus, you'll find low-barrier shelters and harm reduction on their platforms. Read People's Action. They're the policy arm for down-home and local socialist groups, like down-home, the WNC Sunrise Movement, Chelsea White's We Are WNC, and Herd Transformed WNC, Asheville Solidarity, the Sierra Club in Asheville, Madison County's Rural Organizing and Alliance, and the Progressive Alliance of Henderson County. They're not Democrat, Republican, or Independent. They call themselves nonpartisan, but they're the new Socialist Party. Their platforms say they want the government to own our corporations, our banking system, and our privately-owned homes. No police or prisons, felons to vote, and make all drugs legal, because they hate capitalism, which is free trade and how America was founded. They want low-barrier homeless shelters or no-rule shelters to bring in transients, to lower property values, run off tourists, and for their vote. Citizens of Buckham County were able to stop the giant low-barrier homeless shelter at the Ramada Inn at River Ridge by speaking out at the Buckham County Commissioners' Meeting. The city of Asheville has announced they still plan to build low-barrier shelters. They've doubled their transient drug addicts and felons, and doubled their crime. They use harm reduction to supply needles and crack kits to the transients and drug addicts instead of rehabilitation. Haywood County needs a multiple occupancy ordinance restricting low-barrier or no-rules homeless shelters. The socialist goal is to destroy towns with a government takeover. So beware of who you vote for in government elections. We have ninety-five Progressive Caucus Sunrise members in Congress right now, and Buckham County is already fully under their control. The county commissioners and the city of Asheville, every one of them, Sunrise member, two of them are not. Wake up, Haywood County. They're coming for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board this morning? Okay, so you know, when I'll close the public comment session, we'll move on to constituent concerns. I wanted to mention, I want to recognize, it's David, David, you want, I want to recognize our Community and Economic Development Director, David Francis, who's going to introduce Russ Harris as the new Executive Director for the Southwest Commission. Welcome, Dave.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your reappointments. The, I wanted to make sure everybody knew about some changes that have been made over the Southwest Commission recently. Russ Harris was appointed as Executive Director of Southwestern Commission in September after five years of serving as the Director of Community and Economic Development. His main focus for the last three years has been addressing the broadband and housing crisis in the region, and his team has been responsible for bringing over seven million to the region for expansion of broadband service. When we were reconfiguring our broadband committee and looking for expertise, you know, Russ was the first phone call I made. And I think, you know, his leadership and guidance, you know, to our broadband committee, which he serves on, has been tremendous. For Haywood County and our initiatives here has been a very big blessing for the county. And I'd like to recognize Russ. Please come
Congratulations, Russ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, my name is Russ Harris. I've met you all before in my previous role, and just wanted to come by this morning, reintroduce myself, and just talk a little bit about what we have going on at the Southwestern Commission right now. We've passed out annual reports from 2020 for you all to look at. Our mission at the Southwestern Commission is to improve the quality of life in the region by helping our local governments achieve their goals. And we do that primarily through our three departments, which are Community and Economic Development, Workforce Development, and our Area Agency on Aging. With Community and Economic Development, we tend to focus on issues that are kind of rising up beyond local level and things that we see in every community. So as David Francis said, right now, that's been broadband in housing for the last couple of years. We have partnered with you all to start the Southwestern NC Home Consortium. Haywood County is the lead entity in that. It's a federal program, so we're about two years into getting it started, but we do plan on funding, starting to roll in early 2022. With broadband, primarily, our focus is to help private providers. A lot of grant funds can come to internet service providers. We help them by providing grant writing support. So we worked with Skyrunner last year to write their grant for about 1.2 million dollars. That's bringing new broadband service to about three hundred households in Haywood County. We got word on Friday that an Appalachian Regional Commission grant that we worked with Dr. Portot to write is being funded. That will bring broadband to the Brandon Forest community. So we look forward to that, to that project. We also have a revolving loan fund where we can help fund small businesses. We're currently funding a charter bus company in Haywood County, helping them to get started. You know, broadband and housing have been our big issues for the last couple of years. One we hear now when we start to travel around communities is workforce. Everybody's hurting to find workforce. So our workforce department works through providing training funds for businesses. They also are able to, they fund our NC Works Centers to help them provide services. We are working right now on recovery-to-work projects, so that we can work with people who are in active recovery from addiction to help them find work. We're also looking at starting apprenticeship programs and expanding those, so that we can engage youth younger and get them into career paths and help them out. And then, we also, with our Area Agency on Aging, Sarah Jane Melton is our director, and she happens to be here this morning. So instead of me trying to speak to what they do in Haywood County, I'm just going to have her talk real quick.
Good morning. At the Area Agency on Aging, we work with wonderful collaborative partners here in Haywood County to meet the adults and their family caregivers. But just two examples for you this morning. We've been able to work with partners to provide over $500,000 in services to older adults in Haywood County. Too specific, our family caregiver, as you can imagine during COVID, family caregivers have had struggles, and we've been able to provide numerous hours of respite for them, as well as supplemental supplies that they needed. And we were also able, through the Area Agency on Aging, Southwestern Commission, and the other partners across the region, to buy replacement supplies for your Canton Senior Center located in Canton. And so, and that's able to open up, we're ready and able to, to be able to outfit that center. Thank you.
Just one final point. A lot of our support for our organization comes through federal and state dollars, but we help match those funds with dues that are paid by our local governments. So we take in from local governments about $157,000 a year. With that, last year, we brought in about $10 million to the regions. So for every dollar that we're bringing in in dues, we're leveraging that for about another sixty that are coming into the community. And I just want to express my gratitude to Haywood County for your partnership with the Home Consortium, and just every project that we have going on with you all right now. Any, any questions? All right. Thank you all.
No questions, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, but you know, his long list of accomplishments, Haywood County and the folks down at Brandon Forest just received an ARC grant for, for $100,000 to bring broadband to that area. So thanks to Russ's team for that as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, then next, I'd like to recognize and congratulate our Finance Officer, Christian Owen, who has recently completed and passed her exam to earn a North Carolina Certified Finance Officer. So we appreciate that. I know Julie sent you on the right track, and she, she didn't leave us in bad hands. She left us in good hands, Christian. So thank you, and thank you for your efforts. Okay. Okay, then, third, we have Matthew Hooper here from the North Carolina Forest Service. He's going to give us a little bit of update on the forest fires that we've, or the dryness, I guess. Thank goodness, we're trying to get a little bit of rain today, maybe in Wednesday.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Glad to be speaking with you guys today. Just based on what Mr. Moorhead and the Fire Marshal's Office has asked me to speak about, was last Monday, November twenty-ninth, the state did place a statewide burning ban as of five o'clock. That burning ban is initiated by a couple of different factors. It'd be the risk hazards and capabilities of the state. And although our weather has not been too dry here, I would consider this, over the last twelve years of working in Haywood County, this is a pretty average year for us here. But once you move into the eastern part of the state, into the Piedmont, they've really been having trouble containing their fires due to the dryness and their extended drought, which we did not have. So with that burn ban being placed on, that gives the state the jurisdiction of everything a hundred foot away from the house and past that, or an occupied dwelling. And that, that cuts out all burning in that section, except for heating, or warming, and cooking fires. And then there's some, some area in there that we can work with people if they're doing that. Anything within that hundred-foot zone refers back to the Fire Marshal's Office. And as soon as we heard that we were going to be having the burn ban, first thing we do is we call the Fire Marshal's Office, and we speak with them. Historically, the way that we run the burn ban is, is whenever the state puts the burn ban on, the county does as well. We found out in 2020, which was the first time, that the county did not put the burn ban on. The state was kind of driving that because of COVID. They were, didn't want us to be out as much as we could. I worked it through the Fire Marshal's Office, and they did not implement their burn ban, which is that hundred-foot section, because to me, and especially being familiar with the county, I didn't think that the conditions warranted do that. 2020, everybody was kind of handcuffed at doing a lot of stuff, and they were afraid that people were going to be at home more often. They were going to be doing that burning. But I didn't think that we needed to place any more restrictions on the public than what we already had. So that worked out great for us. We decided, since the conditions were no worse this time, what I would consider an average fire season, that we would try it again. And over the last week, I would, I would say it's successful. We've had very few fires. Once the media gets that information out about the burn ban, whether it be in the Fire Marshal's jurisdiction or our jurisdiction, most of those fires succeed. The fires that we have had, our initial attack has been successful. We've been able to catch them very quick and very small. The largest fire that we've had this fall so far has been an acre and a half, and that's just because the fire departments are doing a great job. We're getting there quick, and the conditions are really helpful. We're not having to go into extended attack, having to do extra mop-up or putting that fire, extra efforts into it. So we're not having to suck up those resources that those larger fires to the east are. So as you can tell, there's rain, hopefully, in the forecast this afternoon. I talked to some of the people that are in higher positions than I am about when they think that the statewide burn ban will be taken away. And as of right now, because of the resource shortage, and basically a lot of the Forest Service staff being so young, we don't have as many people to go to these larger fires. So until the middle part of the state and the coastal plain, till they get more significant rain, they'll probably keep that on there. And as soon as it is, we'll, we'll release all the burning permit stuff. But as of right now, it's been a pleasure working with the Fire Marshal's Office. It's been a pleasure working with all of the fire departments. They've all been really receptive to everything that we've recommended. I have great respect for all of them, and hopefully, this burn ban will end soon. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to try to entertain an answer about the burn ban, so.
Just, just thank you for your service, and I know all our voluntary fire departments do an excellent job. Like you say, they got there quick and prevented a huge fire. So just thank you for what you do.
No problem. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate you coming out this morning. Okay, and then, let's see, Brian, where are we at on the jail? You might want to explain why we've not undertaken that yet.
Sure, we've, of course, we, we actually had two different architectural firms give presentations to a group. And after that, we, we did a contract and did some soil samples, some geotech work. That's been completed. We're currently working with the railroad, because they have a hundred-foot right-of-way. And by both designs that were submitted tentatively, our building would encroach in their right-of-way. So we have a little bit of back and forth with the railroad. They want to lease the county, our property, because it encroaches in their right-of-way. And we're working with Frank to get an agreement where we're not leasing our own property. So things are moving a little bit slower there, but we, a lot of this is just due diligence that we have to go through, and didn't see a point in engaging an architect until we get the details ironed out.
Okay.
But the jail population is, is, is not good. The sheriff and I talk two or three times a week about what we're facing, but we're moving in the right direction. It's moving slower than anyone would care there.
Yeah. And I will say, you know, Pathways has been a solution to the jail. It's really helped us keep the recidivism rate down, Sheriff. And the sheriff, he's back there shaking his head, yes. So I remember when we started Pathways in 2013, there was a need, because there was a lot of homeless people that weren't getting any help. And we did, we went ahead to the Commissioners, when we contracted with Pathways to do the, the Pathway Center where the old prison was. So that worked really well. We did have opposition to that, but it was a solution. And now we're seeing the fruits of that from the lady that spoke at our last meeting. And there are hundreds of cases like the lady that spoke that, that Pathways has helped, and it's really kept our recidivism rate down. And of course, with population growth, you're going to always, you know, we've kind of gotten to the end of that. So we, we're all looking at adding on to the jail. And, and as far as low-barrier shelters, we, we don't really get into that. I will say that the county, there was a low-barrier shelter in Maggie Valley during COVID. It worked really well. People gave them a place to stay, gave them a place to, gave them a place to, you know, kind of get, I guess you'd say, get their feet on them, where they could get a job. And I think some of them actually had gotten into jobs while they were, they were at that, and had only operated for a couple of months. So we had law enforcement presence there, and it was some structure. That's what happens with low-barrier shelters. You've got to have some structure. It's not going to be willy-nilly. The one that Mark Pless has talked about is technically a low-barrier shelter in Raleigh. It works really well. It's a faith-based program. And I'm, and I will say, I'm not ashamed to say that I support any effort to help the homeless. I'm a Christian, and my Christianity tells me in Matthew twenty-five, verses thirty-seven through forty-four, I believe, that we need to take care of the homeless. And Jesus said in Matthew twenty-six eleven that the, that the homeless, or rather the poor, you'll have with you always. So I take my admission, and sometimes my Christianity conflicts with my Republican Party, and that's, that's a shame. But I'm going to always err on the side of Christ and on the side of Christianity. I'm not ashamed of the gospel. So hopefully, we can try to get some solutions for some of the homeless folks that we have. There was a couple of great movies that I've watched lately. We have Amazon Prime, and I've just kind of started to get into that. But there's a movie called Same Kind of Different As Me. It's a Christian movie. Same Kind of Different As Me. And it's about, it really helps you understand the homeless people and their challenges, if you will. A lot of them have mental health issues. There's another movie that has Robert Downey Jr. in it. It's called The Soulless. He, and it really shows you that these people have a lot of mental health issues, and there is no help out there today for mental health, none whatsoever, or very little. I shouldn't say none. But we don't have, I know the sheriff was talking about it at one of our meetings, about some of the folks need to be institutionalized. We don't have any institutions to institutionalize them in. So they're just out kind of wandering the streets, and, and they really can't function as normal people like we think they can. A lot of them can't. So there's a lot of mental health issues that we need to try to address. But, but we're looking at all those, those issues, but there's no low-barrier shelter that I know of on our, on our radar anytime soon. So hopefully, those folks can find ways to, to get help. And one thing the low-barrier shelters do do, where you have structure and you have law enforcement present, it gives them someone to talk to about maybe getting off drugs. And like I say, when we did that one in a few months, for a few months back during COVID, it really helped those folks that were participating in that. It's too bad they don't come and, and give us some of their thoughts, but they don't. So anyway. So anyway, but that's my thoughts on all that. So does anybody, let's see, you want to start with Kirk? You want to start with constituent concerns?
I don't have any constituent concerns.
Okay. Jeffrey? Somebody? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Well, just had a few issues there and I think everybody's aware of it. And I think Brian handled it. We had some road signage issues and I think you contacted the Department of Transportation about that. Again, ongoing things with the flood. I live out in that area. And so would you comment, I asked you earlier about the deadline on the debris pickup? I know we're nearing that.
We actually, through our Public Information Officer, published that November 29th would be the last day for debris pickup on private property, getting things to the right-of-way. We had to put an end date. We're still working with owners, but for the most part, we want to be finished on that. We've now got approval from FEMA to pick up just a handful of sites that are in the stream that FEMA has agreed are in imminent danger downstream. So SDR, the contractor that we use, will now pick up about nine or 10 sites in the stream. I think they're going to try to mobilize this week and maybe by the end of this week or first of next week, actually have crews in the stream getting debris out. And they'll be working with owners for right-of-entry and things like that.
I know that's been a huge concern. If we have another flood event, the debris that's been shuffled around could possibly cause some infrastructure damage to bridges and things of that nature. So they're going to be on that.
And it's been a struggle, quite frankly. We've identified way more than the nine or 10 sites that FEMA has approved. We think that there are probably twice that many sites that are a danger downstream, but that's the only approval we have now from FEMA. So we're working through that. We're hoping that we can still make more progress and pick up more sites. But the ones that are really a danger to bridges and things like that, that we're going to try to knock out, like I said, in the next two weeks.
Okay. So if people do have debris that they need picked up, they can still get it maybe, Brian?
Yes. We set that deadline, but we're still working with folks. But we need to get that moved sooner than later. We're running out of time. The weather is going to dictate it shortly as well, so if...
So should they call, if they do have sites that need to be picked up, maybe we don't know about, because some of these are off the beaten path, do they just call?
You want to give your number? No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, get mine on, Brandon. It's an ongoing joke, but I've got the flood hotline. Just call Brandon, he'll let us, they can call the county debris number that we've published, let us know. But the contractor's still making its rounds, so they're pretty good at finding the sites themselves. But if they want to call into our number, we'll certainly put them on the list.
Okay. Go ahead, Brandon.
I also had one other, Brandon, excuse me, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Yes. I did have a constituent concern about taxes and I contacted Greg, our tax collector. And the threshold for the 65-year-old and older tax break is $31,900 per year. And that's per the state of North Carolina. That's not something that we fool around with. That number comes from Raleigh and we're bound to that. So if you're 65 and older and you have income of $31,900 or less, talk to the tax collector about the elderly action, so. And I did have that and also other questions about some other tax issues, but I think we got those handled.
Go ahead, Brandon.
No, I don't really have anything other than the flood-related stuff, as Mr. Morehead suggested. I get many phone calls every week, but I'm glad to be of service. So I joke about it, but you know, that's why I do what I do, is trying to help the community that I live in. So it's no problem at all for me. So you can seriously call me if you have anything.
Okay. I'll move on. Is there any other constituent concerns? I'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations and the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation update from the North Carolina Development Director, George Ivey and the Chief Executive Officer of the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, Carolyn Ward. Welcome, George. How are you doing this morning?
I'm good, thank you. I'd make sure I know what I'm doing here. Okay, very good. Good morning to all of you. Thank you for providing time for us to talk. Carolyn Ward, sensor regrets, we ended up with a double booking and I'm not sure how you'll take it that you ended up with me, but you've ended up with me. So y'all are very familiar, I think, with the Blue Ridge Parkway. It's on the seal right there for the county, along with the Great Smoky Mountains. The parkway stretches 469 miles from Waynesboro, Virginia, down to Cherokee. About 40 miles or so on the Haywood County border, kind of snaking along the ridge tops. It's kind of hard to count what's in Jackson County and what's in Haywood County sometimes, but a pretty good stretch here in Haywood County. But it's a lot more than a road. It is probably the number one tourism driver in the region. The parkway brings in more visitors in Yellowstone, Grand Canyon, and Yosemite combined, more visitors than Great Smoky Mountains National Park. There's no entrance fee, which gets to be an issue. Four main entrances in Haywood County, the Wagon Road Gap, Beach Gap, Balsam Gap, and Soco Gap. So really nice access points for visitors here. As I'm sure many of you know, it's a great haven for biodiversity, especially the southern portion of the parkway. A lot of distinct plant communities. Probably the best known around here would be the spruce fir forests that are on the edges of the mountain tops. 54 species of mammals, some of those federally listed, especially some rare bats. 159 species of nesting birds, which is quite a few nesting birds, and then a lot more that migrate through, probably 200, 250 species of birds that are seen on the parkway in a year. And there's some turks cap lilies and a barred owl on that slide there. The parkway is also a site for living, sort of living museum for culture and history. And that's more so, I think, as you get further north on the parkway, whereas a little bit more agricultural and not as mountainous. This is the Moses Cone Estate and Flat Top Manor, which I'll talk about a little bit later. Probably one of the closest historic sites here would be Buck Spring Lodge up at Mount Pisgah, which was Vanderbilt's little rural retreat. 14 visitor centers on the parkway, the closest one to Haywood County. You do have the Asheville Visitor Center certainly, and then Water Rock Knob, as the crow flies, is only like, you know, 100 yards from Haywood County, but takes a little bit longer to drive. And that is the Puckett Cabin near Hillsville, Virginia there, one of nearly 100 historic buildings on the parkway. The parkway in reality is pretty thin. There's places it's only 100 yards wide. And so that means that it is very long, very thin, has a lot of neighbors, runs through 29 counties, 12 of those in Virginia, 17 in North Carolina, 281 overlooks, official overlooks, then probably closer to 900 roadside vistas where people are driving along and looking, but hopefully keeping an eye on the road, too. And then a total of 4,000 visitors, more than 4,000 visitors. And that's a lot more true. Most of those visitors are on those rural lands as you get into Virginia, not so much down here where we have a lot of Pisgah National Forest Lands bordering the parkway. Most of all, and I think a key theme for us is that it's an economic engine for the local communities. The parkway had over 14 million visitors last year despite, you know, the COVID year and some shutdowns of certain sections of the parkway. And that was the most of any national park unit in the country. The estimate of the local impact, and this is for all the communities within 50 miles of the parkway, is about $1.3 billion of spending. And that supports roughly 15,500 jobs up and down the parkway. A lot of those are more directly in the tourism businesses, but then some are less direct in, you know, construction and other things like that that support the tourism Threats to the parkway. It's hard to get around the fact that the parkway is not funded like it used to be from a federal standpoint. The parkway staff is at about 70% of where it used to be. The funding has not grown much, inflation adjusted over the years. That has led to delayed road maintenance, chip and seal as a sort of short-term measure. A lot of overgrown overlooks, the no-look overlooks that you get to, like at Soco Gap, you get there and the trees are 30 to 40 feet tall. That's all you see. Less protection for natural resources. There's still poaching of resources up on the parkway, everything from witch hazel bark to ramps and ginseng and other odd things. Shuttered buildings, this was the Bluffs Restaurant or Lodge, I'm not even sure. And again, Moses Cone Estate, you can see how Flat Top Manor is just crumbling to pieces there. So it's about a $500,000 backlog of maintenance needs. And really, as that decay sets in, it impacts visitors. So while the parkway had 14 million visitors last year, around 2002 or 2003, the parkway had 21 million visitors, so 50% more. And that was when funding was better, the scenic views were better, and the scenic views are something that visitors cite, about 92% of visitors cite the scenic views as the reason that they come. So there's definitely sort of a domino effect that happens in all of this. So the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation was founded in 1997 to help bring in private resources to help address some of these issues, not to pave the road or fix the plumbing necessarily, but to do some of the work on the visitor interface, especially the historic sites, the natural resources, recreational resources. And as some of you know, Halc Medford, a Haywood County native, founded the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation. Ken Wilson, former publisher of The Mountaineer, was one of the early board chairs. So the foundation has very strong Haywood County roots. We have raised over $18 million, actually provided more than $18 million to the parkway during that time for a lot of different things. One of the major themes that we fund is cultural and historical preservation. This is Mayberry Mill, that some people call the most photographed part of the parkway, though I'm not sure if that's true, but restoring the old mill wheel there among many historic preservation projects that we've done. This is just a little glimpse of the work at the Flat Top Manor that we helped fund in the last two years. You can see just the horrible decay in that image. And then the picture of the restored building that just finished up just a couple of weeks ago, looks like a brand-new building. And it was actually built in 1902 to 1903. It was looking its age two years ago, but now it's looking really great. And that was about one-third Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation money. And then the Park Service came in and matched the other two-thirds. So a great way that we, just like Southwestern Commission, can take money and leverage it, we can leverage those funds as well. Protecting natural resources, everything from wildlife cameras to help assess where wildlife is and isn't, and what else may show up, from wild boars to dogs and other things like that. Wildflower work, a lot of work protecting some of the rare lichens and other species up in those spruce fir forests that are very popular for visitors. And you don't necessarily want the visitors trampling on all that. This would be a good example of that, where this is Rough Ridge Trail up near Grandfather Mountain, where people were scrambling over the rocks. Wasn't really great for visitors or for the rare species there, putting in a pretty substantial set of stairs and boardwalking it and really making it a much better experience for everyone involved, protecting the natural resources as well. There are about 369 miles of trail on the parkway and then they connect to thousands more miles on national forest lands and other local lands. This is a trail project up at Craggy, where you can see just taking an eroding ditch and putting in stair steps and other things to stem the erosion there. As I mentioned, view shed restoration is a big issue, a big concern for us. The foundation got started with view shed restoration probably 10 or 15 years ago. Lynn Collins, the Haywood County TDA, have actually done quite a bit to help fund some of the work here in Haywood County on view shed restoration. We have a major initiative right now called Trails and Views Forever, where we are bringing in private resources to help fund that. Most of that work gets done in March or so, which is a good time of year in terms of natural resources. The trees don't have leaves on them, but also don't have bats in them. So most of that work gets done late winter before, you know, things bud out. But it's a tremendous need up and down the parkway. And we've been making good progress, I think. Graveyard Fields, a very popular spot for people in Haywood County. The work that was done there probably about 10 or 15 years ago, expanding the parking lot, putting in the restroom facilities, improving the trails, the steps down to the lower falls there, the signage, all of that was funded in part by Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation donors as well as DOT funds, US DOT funds. We also fund a lot of education and outreach to help the next generation, anything from indoor exhibits to outdoor exhibits to brochures. We recently completed a large set of improvements to the exhibits up at Water Rock Knob. For better or worse, it's closed until April, so you can't see them until then at this point. But again, focused on the natural resources here. There's also one panel on Cherokee creation story. But if you had been there previously, the exhibit on Elks was basically a bunch of photos that had been laminated and stuck to a board, not the fanciest thing in the world. So some very nice improvements there. But we do a lot more than fundraising. We operate the Blue Ridge Music Center near Galax, Virginia, which is a great location to hear both traditional mountain music and some of the up-and-coming newer acts. We have restored the Bluffs Restaurant, which used to be the Bluffs Coffee Shop near Sparta. Both the lodge and the restaurant closed in 2010 when there was no concessioner bidding on either. And they hosted only mold for the next few years. But we raised about $1 million for that project and restored it to look just like it was when it opened in 1949, or as close as we could. And we actually leased that through historic lease from the Park Service and have a restaurant operator in there. We don't know how to make fried chicken, but they do. So we know how to restore a building and fund that, but just another example of trying to bring back some of the economic benefits of the parkway. One of the things on the previous slide was the Kids 'n Parks logo, and just wanted to go into a little more depth because we just added the first Kids 'n Parks track trail in Haywood County at the Nature Trail Disc Golf Course at the Community College. So Kids 'n Parks started probably 12 years ago as an effort to really get kids outdoors and active again, with a lot of concern about kids just wanting to be on their smartphones all the time. And so it began with a trail on the parkway at the Asheville Visitor Center, expanded to seven sites on the parkway. Then a lot of people were like, hey, how do we get on this? And so it's now stretches across 15 states and Washington DC, about 230 official trails. And we're now working on ways to basically make every trail a track trail to encourage kids to get outside. So if it were like the Waynesville Rec Park or, you know, something local, Canton, they could still use some of the technology that's in there to encourage kids to get out and explore. So this is our first collaboration in Haywood County, again funded through the TDA with a lot of support from the Community College. We'd love to have more than one trail that they're actually much more effective when there's a cluster of track trails than having one just on its own. But we're proud that we've been able to stick a flag in the ground here, so to speak. We ask for money a lot. Don't worry, I'm not asking for money today. We have about 3,000 donors, donor households every year, foundations, businesses, a lot of individuals. The license plates, thank you to anyone and everyone who has a license plate in the Canton and Waynesville tag offices. That brings in over a half million a year, very steady income for the parkway and great advertising, too. We write a lot of grant proposals, federal, state, local. We write a lot of grant proposals, federal, state, local, private, corporate, a little bit of everything. We have some special events. Sometimes companies like Mass General Store will offer proceeds, you know, one weekend a year, they'll share their profits with us. So we raise money however we can, pretty much. Sorry. It's more than money, though. Gifts of time, volunteers make a big difference. Some volunteers work directly for the foundation, a lot work for the parkway, doing everything from painting signs to picking up trash to working on trails. I believe this was a group from UNC Asheville a couple of years ago. And then partnerships, I really want to focus on this to kind of transition to the next thing. But this is a very collaborative effort. Where locally here in Haywood County, there's a lot of concern about people getting lost in the wilderness as they get off the parkway. Again, the parkway is pretty thin. And so pretty soon off the parkway, like you're in the Graveyard Fields parking lot, but you're looking down on Forest Service land. Those trails are Forest Service land. The wilderness is Forest Service land. So these signs were jointly developed with the Forest Service and a lot of local partners, which you can see there, including Haywood County Emergency Services. You'll note there's the National Park Service is not on this list. And I think that's important to recognize that the foundation does not sit at the parkway boundary and look in at the road. We like to be on the top of the parkway, looking out, seeing those relationships, seeing how the parkway can impact local communities for better or worse, hopefully turn those worse into better. So this is a great joint project. 22 signs were installed, and there was a 50% reduction in search and rescue calls between the year before the signs and the year after. So that's, to me, a great example, reducing the cost and burden of those lost visitors, making sure visitors have a better experience. Of course, it can be a life safety issue as well. So I think that's just a great example of how we can work together and make a lot of great things happen. And so we are starting to do a lot more in terms of reaching out to the communities beyond the parkway, looking at those 29 counties and hundreds of towns, and trying to figure out how can we partner more often. And so we, there's a term called gateway communities for a lot of national parks. And you might think of something like Gatlinburg as a gateway community because it's just like right there on the doorstep of Great Smoky Mountains National Park. But we're thinking a little more broadly at sort of those 29 counties, rural areas. It could be a rural, you know, bed and breakfast in a rural area, as well as a vibrant downtown like Waynesville. And so we've gotten started, first in Virginia, coming down in North Carolina. And the basic process of this is to examine the parkway as a community asset, look at the strengths within a community as well as between communities, where it could be that like one county has one great trout fishing stream and another county has eight, but like we could probably work together and promote all of those as one. Identify gaps to fill to get more diverse, more abundant visitors, encouraging them to stay longer, addressing both economic sort of short-term opportunities and long-term. And then, as well as entrepreneurship, there's a great and growing outdoor recreation business industry in western North Carolina, where you have, you know, companies like Sylvan Sport, Eno, a lot of others around here that are really kitspo. This region is really getting to be known for its outdoor recreation industry. And there are, I think, more opportunities for that. So we ultimately want to grow those beneficial impacts and build those partnerships. So what we're doing in North Carolina is some initial outreach through the councils of government, especially in some of the counties that we don't know as well. They're helping us identify key contact people for each county to help us kind of work through, and certainly welcome your suggestions here today. Where we then, a contact list for each county that includes, you know, tourism folks, economic development folks, other nonprofits that may be, you know, logical partners, and other just sort of community leaders who may not have any official title, but are key people to make things happen. And then sending out a survey to really understand local opinions, local thoughts. This process in Virginia, nearly half the people identified responded, which is excellent. And then we get that information back and talk about kind of what the kind of priority areas may be. And then we want to really get in, dig in, and figure out what those local solutions are. We don't really want to pre-populate that. We want that to be a very organic thing, where the local community says this is what we need. So if it's search and rescue, great. If it's fly fishing, great. If it's something else we haven't thought of, that's great, too. So that's the kind of stuff we want to do. The Haywood County, the work in Haywood County and these southern counties will be, obviously it'll be into next year before we really get going. It's a little hard to do things in December, but we'd really love to be, have a very active process here in Haywood County. And so whether it's working on that big gateway initiative, or Kids 'n Parks hiking trails, license plates, whatever we can do together, we just love the opportunity to partner together. I think Kirk may have shared with you these little postcards on some of our economic impact, but I think that's really what it's all about, just trying to bring those tourists in, making sure that, you know, Haywood County, other counties really benefit from those visitors, aren't just paying for a lot of search and rescue work. So that's a brief overview of what we've been up to and what we have coming up. Welcome, questions, comments, suggestions, or what have you.
Do you know how many people visited the Blue Ridge Parkway in recent years or last year, or any of those numbers?
George, I don't know that I gave, I think I had that at my office, but I don't know if I provided them with that sheet. They didn't want to see that sheet.
Yeah, I have some excerpts of these.
Because that answers that question along with some other questions.
Oh, okay.
And actually, that's kind of impressive in regards to the numbers. And one of the TDA meetings, we were discussing the use of funds, and I was going to ask George, George, if the county or the TDA wanted to provide funds specifically for view shed restoration or clearing the overlooks, is that possible to do that? Because that's one of my main concerns. It's what I see when I go on the parkway. And of course, you had noted that visitors have cited that as an issue as well. And it's an issue that if I went up on the parkway and I couldn't see and it said overlook, I won't come back.
Right.
And I think that's really important to preserve that.
Very true. And just for Mr. Long, the visitation has ranged from 14 million to 21 million over the last 20 years. It's been about 15 and a half average over the last 15 years. I know because I had to put in that statistic for a grant proposal. But it was about 15 million in 2019, 14 million last year, and we're expecting it to be back above 15 million this year. And for Mr. Kirkpatrick, yes, we receive donations, everything from unrestricted to very restricted, where someone is like, I want this spent in Downton Park on trails. And we respect that, and we work with the Park Service to do that. Sometimes we will take a project on ourselves directly when the Park Service can't do it because we have a little, we have some freedom to do things, but certainly not all. We can't just go in and cut down trees. But yeah, you know, welcome the opportunity to work on Haywood County-specific work. We do have the, we're replacing the observation platform atop Mount Pisgah next year. Actually have a pretty good amount of funding in place for that. And Carolina Mountain Club is actually going to do the work, provide the volunteers along with the Forest Service. But yeah, working on view sheds or working on trails, there's a little bit of a lag time working with the Park Service, and then also just coordinating because on those overlook clearings, there is a process. They do have to make sure, you know, in terms of rare species and all of that. And a lot of that, when it's major work, they really have to do it. Volunteers can usually come in and kind of maintain once that's, you know, established and where it's just, you know, one or two years' growth. But when it's major work on big trees, it takes a while. But yeah, we'd be happy to work, you know, either directly with y'all or through the Park Service to make things happen and keep the money local. We actually also have a local, there's a private foundation that's given us $10,000 a year, same general idea, keep it local. And so we're working on that.
How many access points do we have in Haywood County to the parkway?
The main access points would be four, Wagon Road Gap near Pisgah Inn, Beach Gap near Devil's Courthouse, Balsam Gap and Soco Gap. There's a few trails, there's a little bit of, you know, there's a couple of backroads, dirt roads you can kind of access, but they aren't really well-known. So and then you have the Hightugger Road offshoot, that's sort of one way once you get too far on that, so.
Tremendous asset to our county, for sure.
George, you have any idea about, you know, the 14 million applies to the whole Blue Ridge Parkway. Do you have any idea of the number of visitors that attributes to Haywood County?
I'd have to go see what the, there are some breakouts where they do have strips at particular exits and entrances. Let me look that up. I would imagine one of these four would have that, and it would probably get you some idea. It may not be perfect.
That's all right.
Because if it's like, if it's the Balsam exit entrance, they could be going to Jackson County or Haywood County. And so it ends up being a little bit of guesswork.
Right. Any other questions?
What amazes me is, and I see it here on the postcard as well, that Yellowstone, Yosemite and the Grand Canyon combined don't have as much visitors as we do. That is correct?
It's true. And some of that is because they're in rural areas, and so they don't have an Atlanta or a Charlotte to drive to as part of it. They're certainly iconic, not as many people internationally would know of the Blue Ridge Parkway compared to a Yellowstone. So they tend to have a lot more international visitors as well, which is, can be a blessing or a curse. It meant that the Blue Ridge Parkway held steady while a lot of those other parks that rely on a lot of international visitors had a much greater impact during COVID and various flight restrictions.
It's a great asset for our county. My family keeps me on the go. We were up at the Moses Cone Manor over Thanksgiving. My daughter lives up toward Blowing Rock, son-in-law there in school up there. But it is a magnificent place. If no one's ever experienced the Lenco Viaduct and on up toward Blowing Rock and experienced that, that acreage up there, they got to build a couple of lakes, hiking trails all over the place. The viewing platform on Mount Pisgah does need some attention. We were up there not long ago, and I look forward to seeing that. So it is a great asset for our county.
We do, too.
I know, I've got a son, it's a little bit hard to impress, and we went out to Yellowstone and saw all that, and went to about 16 states and 5,000-some miles driving. We came back up I-40, and he said, Dad, these are the beautifulst mountains I've seen since we left on this whole trip, you know, right here at home. So sometimes we take for granted, you know, what we have because we live here, but.
True.
Great asset.
Thank you.
Also wanted to ask if I heard you right, you raise over a half a million dollars through the tags, is that correct?
Every year.
Wow, that's pretty impressive. So if anybody's listening, go buy some tags, right?
Please do, please do. We're trying to get one going in Virginia, and it's a bit of a slow process to get them going. But yeah, it's tremendous. It's the top tag in the state. It's also available for motorcycles because, you know, a lot of motorcyclists love riding the parkway as well.
I figured it would raise some money, but raising that much was a little shocking or amazing, so it's good.
Yeah, we're very, we keep an eye on it in Raleigh, where they make a lot of decisions about license plates, so. Okay. Well, you'll be hearing more from us. Really appreciate the time and your interest, and feel free to contact us anytime if you have concerns, if you see an opportunity for historic together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out today, George. Our next order of business is discussion or adjustment to the agenda. I don't have any adjustment to the agenda, but I do have a discussion on the list of boards on which commissioners serve, and we want to consider any assignments. I think that's in our packet. I think, Jen, you were having trouble making one of them.
Yeah, I have a standing conflict for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. They meet the first Wednesday of each month, and I have another standing appointment on the first Wednesday as well, so.
I've got the Southwest Commission, that board that they've got me appointed to. If you want to switch with, I can switch that with you.
Sure.
And what that is, is it's every other month, I think. They put out a schedule, and actually, all elected officials can go to that. But I was just kind of the appointee for our board to go. I know Tommy goes with me a lot, and Bryant goes some, but all of you can go. They usually have, well, during COVID, they didn't, but usually they have a meal and then a program.
Yeah, I've been on some of their Zoom calls. They did, there was a Zoom meeting for a while.
Yeah, okay. So if you want to, we'll just swap that one out. So is that okay with everybody?
That's fine with me.
Then that way, we'll have a JCPC, I'll do that.
It's a very valuable board, and I feel like that somebody definitely needs to be serving there.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out and stuff, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll vote on that in the next meeting. We'll vote on these to next meeting. Is everything else okay with everybody?
Yeah, I'm good.
There's a couple of things. The Downtown Waynesville Association, it's kind of in limbo. The town has taken that back over, and I'm not certain whether, if I'm notified, I'll go to a board meeting, but I just wanted to let you know that. And then the Haywood Regional Medical Center Hospital Authority is no longer in existence either. I am on the Haywood Health, Haywood Health Foundation, though, and that's not listed on here.
Is that a board appointment?
I don't know if it is or not.
We can check into that.
I think it is. I think because of the.
Oh, we did? She says it is, yeah.
Yeah, I think because of the agreement we have, that's the reason I'm on that board.
Oh, okay. So we just need to take TDA out?
I think, I think just replace Haywood Regional Medical Center Hospital Authority with Haywood Health Foundation. Isn't that what it is, Haywood Healthcare Foundation or something?
The Downtown Waynesville Board, that goes away, I guess.
Well, I would probably just leave it on there for right now. I mean, it's in political limbo.
Yeah, right. You're right. Does anybody have anything else? We'll take care of that at our next meeting then. Okay, well, I don't have any, does anybody have any other discussion or adjustment to the agenda? And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda this morning? Here now, are you taking the motion? We approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are you in any discussion at all? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to oppose. Okay, we'll move on to our next order of business is regular agenda. The first item is to request approval to award a bid for the purchase of the following nine county vehicles from the bidder stated below in the amount of $255,923.82 to be paid from fiscal year 2022 budgeted funds. Go ahead, Chris.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. I'm here to request the approval to purchase those nine vehicles as stated. We sent out an RFB in October to nine different dealerships, local, the three local in Haywood County, and others around western North Carolina, even as far as Raleigh. So we received three bids back. You will see the breakout, as I have listed, for the awards, several to Ken Wilson Ford, several to Taylor Motor Company. Those were the only two local in-county bidders. So with that, and I'd like to answer questions. If you'd like me to read it all, I will, but I'm not sure how much detail you want me to state.
We need to read it, you think, Tracy? Yeah, because it's in our agenda pack. I don't think you need to do that. Does anybody have any questions about any of the vehicles?
I'm just glad that we had the. I'm just glad that we had the, the local companies that are, that are obtaining these bids. And, you know, it's been, it's been difficult to, to communicate to the community the fact that they have to, you know, we have to go through a bid process. We can't just award things to local businesses. But I think they've caught on and I've seen more and more local businesses obtaining these bids now.
Two of the three local dealerships bid and will be awarded vehicles. The Auto Star of Waynesville chose not to provide a bid.
Did they give you any indication on inventory and availability?
Well, I haven't gotten to that yet. There is a caveat you will see in your agenda package that there's no guarantee of delivery prior to July 1st. Everyone thinks they can get this, but most of them are 30 weeks out from the date of order. So if we get everything processed this week, award the bid, purchase orders, we'll probably 30 weeks to get those.
What does that do to our county vehicle fleet? I mean, are we in desperate need to replace these or will we be able to hang on until mid 2022?
We're, we're obviously in need. What we would hope to do is piece some things together to get us by until we can receive these. If we go beyond July 1, we'd like to still continue to, to attempt to get these vehicles in, even if we have to reappropriate funds for, out of the fund balance after July 1. I don't see next year being any easier to get vehicles.
I've recently traded vehicles and it was no easy feat, I will say that. Very difficult.
It is difficult. One of the things that, that you were gracious enough to do for us is allow us to order the $13 Dodge Chargers for the sheriff's office early on. We found the 21, 2021 models on the lot. You can't buy eight-per-seat ready Dodge Charger now. So we were fortunate to do that and we have those proposed for delivery after the first of the year.
Is there any other questions? Can I, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion at all? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Who want to oppose? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And the, the second item of the regular agenda is to request approval of a budget amendment for public safety of $33,519 to appropriate seized drug forfeiture funds from fund balance for the purchase of a 2021 Dodge Durango from Performance Auto Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. And we have our chief deputy Jeff Haynes here this morning. Welcome, Jeff.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Before you today, I'm requesting an approval, or the sheriff's office is requesting approval of, of a budget amendment in the amount of $33,519 appropriating seized drug forfeiture funds from the fund balance for the purchase of a 2021 Dodge Durango from Performance Automotive Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram, which is in, is on the North Carolina Sheriff's Association Vehicle Procurement List, but following on the heels of Mr. Boyd as well, too. The, the inventory is so thin right now that none of these, or the vehicles that were available statewide, this is the only one that was actually sitting available and it was evidently an overorder from another agency and at some point that they had left. But it is, it's a brand-new vehicle and is available currently at Performance Dodge. And we're requesting $33,000 to be pulled from drug asset forfeiture money to be able to purchase that.
Anybody have any questions about item two?
I, I just have a question. How does that, is that drug seizure money from Haywood County or is that something that is, it is?
What it is, is it, it comes from the, from the federal government. There's a percentage depending on how the asset forfeiture occurs. If, if it is seized back through the federal government, US Marshal Service has an 80%, it's an 80/20 split. They take 20% for cost of doing business, 80% comes back to the county. If it's seized from the, from the state side, it goes strictly back to the school system. So depending on which direction it goes through the court system, which seizure direction it goes, either state or federal government, depends on the percentage that comes back to the county. This particular group, and the finance director can, can correct me if I'm wrong. This particular fund comes strictly from the federal government.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose? Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the next item is to request approval of budget amendment for county purchases, repairs and maintenance of $114,588 to appropriate funds from fund balance and approval of Mission Critical Partners LLC contract in the amount of $114,588 for the Public Safety Radio Tower Design Consulting Services for Phase One of the Lake Logan Area Radio Tower Project and authorization for the county manager to execute all required documentation pertaining to said contract. We have our IT Director Joey Webb here. Welcome, Joey. Good morning.
Good morning. Just a quick update on the Public Safety Radio Project, the first phase, which you guys are aware of, that we've been working on for probably a couple of years now, is almost totally complete. They're doing some final testing and tuning. All the equipment is in place. So we're working on that and doing some testing and preliminarily, it's looking really good. The one thing for those that were involved in some of those meetings early on that we knew was we still had a dead spot in the Greater Lake Logan Bethel area. So this is the first phase of a tower to correct that dead spot. We're looking at a couple of different properties and Mission Critical Partners actually worked with us to help design the 911 Center about six years ago and the new tower that's there at the sheriff's office that came with it. So we had a really good experience with them and their engineers and the design there. So we're asking to engage them again and to start the planning process to build this new tower. We expect the engineering and planning to take the better part of the winter and we're hoping that that'll time out where we'll be ready to break ground when warm weather comes back around.
Do you think it'll break ground when?
In the spring.
Spring.
Anybody have any questions? I think you've checked around. This saves a lot of money from the other provider we were looking at, so.
Yeah.
Or save some money anyway.
No, no questions. Just glad to see us moving forward on it. You know, I get a lot of calls from this as well and it is a much-needed service in that area. So thank you for what you're doing. And I know, like Kevin said, we're, we're going to save some money and hopefully get that, that community better communication. So thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item three of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Our next order of business is appointments and we have our county manager, Brett Morhane, to describe that. Now, item one. Go ahead, Brett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll remember from Shelley Forman's last presentation about Vaya expanding out of the region even over as far east as Vance County. Before, they've had a community, or a county commissioner advisory board, but because of their, their size, they're going to more of a regional board design. I've sat on that board, Commissioner Best as well. But in the new design, Aradov has sat on, on the Vaya board before. And I think he would be a better fit in my place on this because, especially with Medicaid transformation and all of the, the services Vaya works with, the health department and social services. His expertise would be better than mine and commissioner is required and Commissioner Best has agreed to sit on that board.
Any, any other discussion on that? I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of appointments.
So moved.
For a second? Okay, any discussion at all? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, our next order of business is closed session. And we have two items. Attorney-client is 143-318-11A3 and economic development is 143-318-11A4. I'll entertain a motion. We go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be in closed session when we enter the commissioner's meeting room in the back.
Our next meeting, regular meeting, we'll just have a regular meeting, so I guess it'll be the one before Christmas. Can I entertain the motion? Will you adjourn?
I'm moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.